Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Ravel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Not here. Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Eight members being present, we have a quorum and are ready to do our business. I would first entertain a motion to suspend the rules, allowing for remote participation.
I move suspension of the rules in accordance with the Governor's Open Meeting Act Emergency Declaration.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules to allow for remote participation. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries and the rules are suspended to allow for remote participation. The next item on our agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations, of which there is, you'll be pleased to learn, only one this evening. We're designating July as Parks and Recreation Month here in the city of Evanston, as we do every year. A designation that perhaps has even more emotional resonance in a year like this, that are opportunities to be outdoors and together while healthy and safe are especially treasured. So enjoy Parks and Recreation Month, starting in just a few days. That concludes my public announcements. Next is the city manager's public announcements. And for the public's information, because city manager Erica Storey is away, deputy city manager Kimberly Richardson is acting city manager during this period of time, and will give the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I will ask Laura Biggs, city engineer, to come and speak on the skate park update. It'll be a few, couple minutes.
Honored councilmembers, Mayor. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. And I just briefly wanted to give an update about where we are with skate parks. So we've had multiple public engagements, including two public meetings and an online survey. And from that, we've gleaned a lot of information. One of those is we plan to build a temporary skate park this year to have in service late summer, early fall. People really oppose that, so we are just going to go to doing a permanent skate park. The location should be central. There's a lot of kids that are just accessing it without being able to drive. The location should not be close to residences. And the installation should be in-ground construction, like a concrete construction, that would appeal to multiple skate styles, not just one or two. And so as we went through everything, we found this good location might be Twigs Park. This is just adjacent to Green Bay Road. It's not adjacent to residences. There are some businesses located nearby. We put this out there as a potential location. We received a lot of favorable comments about it. And so now we're on to next steps, which is that this fall, we will be procuring, we'll be issuing an RFP, procuring a design consultant. We do plan to conduct additional public engagements to further define what the needs are of the community as we move forward. We'll be preparing contract documents and looking at starting the construction probably in late '22. We are in the process of forming a strategic advisory committee, so we'll be reaching out shortly to ask some community members to participate in that process. And that's where we are.
Thank you very much. Is that the end of the city manager's report?
That is correct, Mayor.
Councilmember Fleming, I see your light is on. Do you have a question for Ms. Biggs? Go ahead.
Thank you. So I actually spoke to some skaters just this weekend. Had we considered, I know we do a lot of consulting services, but we also have a lot of brilliant people in town. And have we considered using a resident for some of that design? I know we've talked to them about what they want in the park, but my understanding is that we have some residents here who were really, really helpful in even laying out the park, I think, at Highland Park. And it was my understanding that they offered to do the same here, which might save us some consulting costs. And we spend a lot of money on consultants. And then my other just suggestion is when we get to the point of whenever we have a design and we're going for bed for work, is that Ozinga, you know, the cement company that's here in town, actually have been pretty good partners in doing some projects in the ninth ward. And so it might be worth reusing cement to ask them for a donation in kind, which I'm happy to facilitate. I talk to the owner quite often, just to think about how we can cut costs and have them be a better partner here in town.
Okay. Great questions. So I'll answer the first one, which is why don't we just have some of our extremely talented residents? There's actually two answers to that. One, I think that we actually have more than one extremely talented resident that would love to participate. I'm not entirely sure that they would do it without compensation or not. However, the second answer is that skate parks have an interesting liability component to them. And I do think we have to be really careful about making sure that we are really trying to procure the best services in the best way all the time in order to make sure that we limit our liability in the event that somebody would ultimately potentially be injured in the skate park. But we do actually think this is a really great place for some of these residents, which is to be in the advisory committee and really helping us with flesh out the design. So that's part of the reason why we really want to focus on the advisory committee and get going with meetings to be able to talk to them about their ideas. A little bit, this is delayed just purely because of staffing limitations at the moment. We're in the middle of a construction season right now.
Okay. So then my last comment is in that advisory council, I would hope that we use some young folks, because they are still skating over at Ridgeville, which brings me to my last point, which is to thank Real Street Park District, because they had kind of the makeshift skate park. Last year, they remodeled their basketball court. They did not plan on having it again. But they've been great neighbors and they bought some kind of movable skate park equipment, and so they have it out there now. And so I just want to thank Ridgeville for filling the gap while we make a long-term plan.
Yes. So very much, we do want to include some younger people on the committee. And I think one of the issues we've had with the public meetings is we have gotten some younger people, but not a lot. And so we're reaching into the committee, or the community, to make sure that we do have that component represented, because I don't want it to be too slanted towards not including their interests. And as far as Ozinga, yes, I'd be happy to talk with Ozinga as well.
Councilmember Reed?
Just a very quick question. What were the savings this year? Or the lack of expenditures, I should say, since we didn't move forward with the temporary skate park?
I believe we had that budgeted approximately $60,000. And so there's a couple of options. We can not sell the bond for that money. We can take that money and wrap it into the design and construction services as we move forward with the skate park. So there are two pathways there.
So we bonded, I'm sorry, so we bonded out for the $60,000 already, or?
We have not yet sold the bond, but we have already sent a list to the bond council, so it can be modified. But the more time that goes by, the more of a challenge that is to do.
And so would it maybe make sense not to bond out on that, since it's, you know, we'd have to save the interest cost and the other costs and just come back next year if we need the money?
That is certainly an option. I will say we budgeted $50,000 for consulting services. And meanwhile, the scope of what people were requesting for a skate park has expanded slightly. And so the $50,000 is likely to be comprehensive. But I can't imagine we'd spend more than $50,000 this year in consulting services. So we can either wrap that as consulting services or not bond for it, but then bond part of the consulting services for next year, which is totally valid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I wanted to acknowledge the receipt that was already submitted to council, emailed by Matthew Mirapal. And then Judy Malik wanted the council to consider naming Robert Crown Lorraine H. Morton Center instead. I also wanted to ask the council to please accept my amended minutes. The last set of minutes that you received had an error in the adjournment, and if one of you could make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Mendoza. The next item on our agenda is public comment. As has become customary, most of the people requesting to make a public comment are requesting to do so remotely. We'll start with them. And each person will be given three minutes. I'll pipe in when you have 15 seconds left to give you a warning, and then cut you off at three minutes. And we'll begin with Mike Vasilko.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bis. Just two things. You're just talking about things that were bonded, potentially. And there was an item on the agenda in APW that I wasn't able to get connected for some reason. But A4, which was a request to add $104,000, almost $105,000 for something for the, for some renovation, I guess, in one of the fire stations, but that wasn't scheduled for this year, apparently. So I don't know what you decided during APW, but I would ask that you deny that and just push it on to next year, when it can be officially put on, you know, on the budget. Secondly, I'd like to cede the rest of my time to Alderman Sufferton to answer the question why he hasn't conducted a ward meeting now approaching six months. And every other alderman has done so. Just before the elections, Alderman Sufferton made every effort to have many meetings. So I'd like to understand why it can't be that we have ward meetings in the sixth ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Joel Freeman. Joel, are you there? I see her in the Zoom.
Mayor, I believe he might be double muted.
Did you say double muted, Luke? Is that a thing? That sounds terrible. Well, we'll come back to Joel, of course, if we can solve the tech problem. Let's move on, in the meantime, to Carlos Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, Acting City Manager, Acting City Manager Ms. Kimberly Richardson, City Clerk Mendoza, and Alderman. I have several concerns. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Bis, for giving us this opportunity to make comments. But I'm very concerned about Article 10 and Hour 1. Secondly, before we start having any more extensions to Groot, I am not in favor of the favorable report given by the city manager of the courteousness and the service that Groot has provided to residents of Evanston. I see you having concerns about business. I also hope you have that same concern, that we residents will get effective services. And while talking about that, I'm also concerned, as a resident who was supposed to have been having the benefit of a paved alley as a result of the waste management. Now, every alley in the second ward and up to the 17 block on Darrell has been paved. There's been no action to pave the alley behind my house. It has been graded twice this year. And I invite all of you over to wade in Lake Sutton in my backyard. And you don't have to have tokens, because every time it rains, water is over my ankle and into my yard, where they have not sufficiently leveled it off. And why do I have to wait further for the paved process that was part of the city settlement with waste management? An amendment to the Groot emphasis should include some of the concerns of the citizens before extending their contract with the city. Next, I have comments on Article 1, Ordinance 72021. I oppose the proposal to diminish the amount of citizen participation in these kinds of discussions, from concurrent arrangement to 10 members, six aldermen, one planned commission, one zoning board, and two citizens. I think it would be most appropriate, since the aldermen have two votes on every issue, that you should extend more participation to the citizens. Why don't you consider having six citizens on the council? And also, at this time, that transparency and involvement of citizen participation should be extended and not diminished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three minutes sharp. Well done. Our next speaker is Linda Del Bosque. Is Linda Del Bosque?
Unmuted. Okay, got it. Thanks, Luke. Luke just texted me and said we can only see half of your face. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. I come to you this evening. There has been a concern about our small business districts. Currently, we have three, one established in 1987, the downtown business district, and two followed in the last two or three years. Unfortunately, these business districts do not service all our businesses in Evanston. I see that over $650,000 has been given as a tax levy for the downtown Evanston, where in COVID and prior to COVID, the retention rate for customers was at 2%. I would like to speak with, I've actually been speaking with the council. Thank you, Alderman Reed, Alderman Kelly, and that I both agree that we need to create a larger, diverse, and equitable opportunity for all businesses across the board to work together and find a way to redistrict this with the mixed use of businesses and homes. So we really need to dismantle the SSA, because they were really put up in 1987, and it really creates barriers, and it segregates our businesses. Two, five, eight, and nine businesses are unable to receive the same resources. So it's not equitable by any means. And if someone, if downtown Evanston is spending $70,000 on advertising and radio and TV and digital, well, we really need to look at that, because we do have businesses in the fifth, in the second ward that could utilize the same resources. So I'd like to see if there could be a committee put together to revisit our SSAs. We're only 7.8 mile radius. It's not a lot to handle. And for us to have three separate SSAs, over a million dollars going into resources, whether it be infrastructure or trash or maintenance and advertising for over eight, you know, $80,000? We've got businesses suffering that can't even pay their electric bill during COVID. And we're giving WGN $10,000 a month. And I say wait, because it's a tax levy. These are buildings that are here putting money into the pockets of these large businesses. Whenever 615 Davis wanted to be, they came over and spoke with Joanna Leonard at the community, the DARBS event, or the DARBS meeting. The day I was towed, because I sat there and cried and cried, how can Joanna ask $50,000 from 615 to be donated to downtown Evanston? It's insane. We really need to take a look at what's going on with our businesses, because this is what sustains Northwestern and our community. All right? So let's tackle that this year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Reynolds.
Thank you. I'd like to speak this evening to parking pay stations at the lakefront. The proposal to institute paid parking along the lakefront is not well thought through a plan. Generally, when making changes to parking regulations or pricing, a study is done to determine the likely outcome. No study has been done to determine who is presently parking on the lakefront, where they are from, and how long they stay. Without such information, one is just guessing. Not a good way to conduct policy. It is ironic to propose charging people to use our lakefront, just as we finally open our beaches to everyone. Should we lift the price on one group, only to lower it on another? It is inconsistent, and it is not the welcoming community Evanston strives to be. Pay stations give all the wrong messages. They are quintessentially urban. They are aesthetically completely out of keeping with the park's natural world and opposite of welcoming. As the people's parks, they should be available to all without charge. Paid parking has been proposed for lakefront before, and the city council has always turned it down, recognizing that this is not the way to try to make money. My wife and I have lived and operated a business in the area east of downtown for decades. I served for many years on the parking and then the parking and transportation committees, where I learned about people's parking priorities and habits. It is almost universal that when there is a charge for parking and there is free parking nearby, people choose the free option, in this case, the surrounding neighborhoods. With free parking so close, it is unlikely that the proposed plan would raise significant revenue while incurring city enforcement costs. Please do what every city council before you has done and keep our valuable lakefront open, free, and clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Holly Reynolds.
Thank you. David spoke about pay stations, and I would like to speak about food trucks. The first thing to think about is the value of Evanston's lakefront to its citizens. And then to think, in what does that value lie? It lies in our lakefront's natural properties. There is nothing man can do to improve those. What we can do is make them available to everyone who wishes to enjoy them and not to do anything to diminish their beauty and power. Food trucks and pay stations are contradictory to both. We live in an urban, man-made world, surrounded with man-made objects. Parks have long been recognized as vital to urbanites. They give us nature to which we can respond in deep ways. Those who frequent our lakefront see people doing this every day. People come to sit on the lawn, on a bench, or in chairs they bring to read, to talk with friends, and very often to just look out at the lake, lost in thought and clearly losing themselves in the landscape around them. This is what nature gives. It's far more than just visual. It's the quiet, the calm, the peacefulness, which is so different from, in fact, a release from busy lives. It's the absence of things which characterize our urban world. Anyone who frequents our parks know they're used by people of all walks of life. The preponderance are those of lesser means. The lakefront is the people's park. It is where everyone can get away from the city for a time. Food trucks are inimical to this in every way. They are quintessentially urban. Their very appearance, their massive forms, their exhaust in the clean air, their constant noise will degrade our lakefront. Evanston seeks to be a green city. Noise pollution is as real as any other form, and studies show its harmful effects. We have the luxury of quiet green space, and it's counter to all this community is working towards to ignore its value and do away with it. Food trucks are also completely unnecessary, as people bring the food they want, lunch purchased downtown and brought to the lakefront, picnics, large and small, all with a gentle footprint. Evanston has always preserved its lakefront. There have been many suggestions over the years for commercial additions, including food venues, and citizens in the council have always resisted them. They've always been good stewards, keeping our lakefront natural. The future does not lie with increased pollution. It lies with less, with lightening man's hand, with respecting the environment and recognizing nature's generous gift. Please do what every city council before you has done and allow our lakefront to enrich this community with its unique gifts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Albergro.
Mayor, I don't believe Ms. Albergro is on.
Great. Thank you, Luke. The next speaker then is Tina Payton.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to talk about R1. Many people were not notified of this meeting for R1. It is disguised as an economic development issue, and nothing about reparations until you dig further. My name, as well as others, are on the reparations email list, which was previously sent out monthly by Tashik Kerr. No meeting has been held about reparations since February. Therefore, no meeting or any discussion about reparations should be held without proper notification. Reparations is starting to look like bait and switch and a farce. This looks like just a TV op for Evanston to show we're number one, and we're the first to talk about reparations. The city council should not be on the reparations committee deciding. The people that are qualified to receive reparations in the community should be making decisions about the money, not the city dictating what to do with the money, which you do with most items on the agenda now and in the past. If you do what was suggested, which was cash payments, then you don't need all these committees and meetings. You need to find out who's qualified for reparations, where is the money, how much money each person should get, and then you won't need all of these dictatorships by the city of Evanston. Six council members, zoning person, and planned commission is out of control. And you only have two members of the citizens of Evanston deciding on what to do with reparations money. This is supposed to be repairing a harm, and it looks like you're introducing a new harm. I also want to briefly say that the proposed five-fifth TIF should not be discussed before proper notice. I discussed this at Economic Development, and they were going to have a meeting about, six comments about what to do with the TIF money. I have not received proper notice in the mail, not Facebook. You need to send out proper notifications about the TIF and what's going on, and not speak about any agenda items that has not been properly notified. Thank you, and Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Renee Payton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I agree with everything that Tina has said. I would like to speak on R1 as well. Why wasn't the word reparations on the agenda tonight? Is this so people can't see that the reparations committee is being discussed? Why has reparations become such a secret? There was never true transparency with reparations, and the secret squirrel activities continue. No one knows how much money is in the reparations fund or who is handling it. Everything disappeared from public view regarding reparations. No reports, not a sound. Now the secret squirrel committee is adding people, and did we know about that? Reparations is a lie and is not repairing those elders who were most injured, the people that the whole report was created for. It is a concoction that was manipulated and continues to be manipulated into something unrecognizable. Stop excluding the public from reparations, like the majority of the elders were excluded from reparations. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed has a brief response to this question.
Yeah, just a point of personal privilege here to respond, because this is something that's extremely important to the entire community, particularly the black community, and I don't want to sow any more distrust. So I just want to clarify that the-- So there's the title, there's the chapter. It changes the chapter for reparations. There were some committees that the council voted to eliminate previously, and so we have now changed the chapter from Title II, Chapter 17, to Title II, Chapter 16. And then, yes, there is an addition of the Economic Development Committee as a codified committee, but that is completely separate. That is actually now Chapter 17 of Title II. So it's, there's no amendment to the reparations committee here, just economic development, or just codifying and creating the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, councilmember. The next speaker is Alan Mulumbi. Is Alan in the Zoom?
I do not believe so, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. In that case, the next speaker is Mary Rozinski.
I do not believe she's online either.
Thank you. In that case, the next speaker is Barbara James.
Can you see me?
Well, we can hear you. Looks like your camera's off. Oh, there you are.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to read the statement that the Evanston Parks and Lakefront Alliance sent to the council over the weekend, so that people who are not aware of this issue will be aware of it. And this is from the Evanston Parks and Lakefront Alliance. We are writing to urge you to postpone voting on ordinance 1773-021, which would permit food trucks along the lakefront until the council and citizens have had a chance to more thoroughly consider the pros and cons and potential unforeseen consequences from making such decisions. There are several reasons for this. One, there has been no opportunity for citizen review, discussion, and input into the ordinance. For a council that says it values transparency, there has been none. Two, the Lakefront Master Plan is the Evanston City Council Lakefront Planning Document, still in force, created with an extensive years-long citizen input process and unanimously approved by the Evanston City Council. The Lakefront Master Plan clearly states, quote, "Public feedback has suggested that minor concessions, facilities associated with the new restrooms that have since then been built, are acceptable." Quote, "Minor facilities have been described as prepackaged or refrigerated foods, drinks, and necessities such as sunscreen," while excluding significant facilities such as grills and kitchens. Whenever decisions about the lakefront are made, it is necessary to follow the existing Lakefront Master Plan. Just because... Three, any proposal whose goal is to generate revenue should have the anticipated revenue information available to the public for consideration of the issue. The original thought to have food trucks at the lakefront was to generate revenue for the city. Our attempt to obtain information from the city as to the amount of revenue food trucks produce has been unsuccessful, as we were told to FOIA the information. It won't be available until Wednesday. Thus, we citizens cannot determine how much revenue...
Fifteen seconds.
Oh, no. And there has been no transparency, and the council should provide citizen input and a lot more information. This is an ordinance that could create detrimental changes to the character of the lakefront and needs to be carefully considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Daniel Trujillo.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Biss and councilmembers. I have a different, a little bit of a different take on ordinance 73021. My name's Dan Trujillo. I am a Second Ward resident, small business owner here in Evanston, and I'm here this evening to express my support for the council's proposal to amend the outdated Evanston Lakefront Master Plan by way of the adoption of ordinance 73021. This Evanston Lakefront Master Plan was created, as we've heard, over a decade ago, and while there was, yes, community support for the plan at the time, communities are fluid, and it is the responsibility of our elected officials to adjust to the developing needs of our community. At the twilight of a global pandemic that has decimated the restaurant industry and many Evanston small businesses, it's time that we start to think of new and responsible ways to support outdoor dining along the lakefront. The lakefront is a public space. It belongs to everyone in the community, not just the residents along the lakefront. As Evanston residents, small business owners, and food service providers, my partner Chef Molly Latch and I welcome the proposal, as it provides more opportunities for local businesses like ours to thrive in our community. Your proposal is also a step in the right direction toward responsibly integrating food trucks and mobile food vendors into public spaces. So I join the council and other, and other community members, as we've heard, in their concerns about the environmental impact this amendment could have if this project is not done in tandem with residents and food vendors. For our part, my business, The Wandering Cafe, offers a sustainable take on street food as Evanston's first and only licensed mobile food bike. We work to support local farms, maintain a low-carbon footprint in a way that traditional beach concession stands cannot. As a licensed food vendor here in Evanston, a minority and woman-owned business, Wandering Cafe looks forward to being part of the initial pilot program this summer. Chef Molly and I are also happy to assist the Human Services Committee, city council, the Environmental Health Division with any future proposals and initiatives to reform the city's licensing and permitting process for food trucks and mobile food vendors. So I urge councilmembers not to do what other city councils in the past have done. I urge councilmembers to adopt ordinance 73021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Priscilla Giles. We can't hear you, Ms. Giles, if you're speaking.
Yes, I was. I'll start again.
Perfect, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Sure can.
Okay, thank you. I want to speak to the topic of the absentee landlords. This is especially a problem in the Fifth Ward and near the lake, where there are so many vacant apartments that could be rented to people who are seeking rental in the Fifth Ward. One problem is the boarded-up homes on Jackson and on Emerson, and on Emerson Street that receive no violations, yet the people who live there are paying what rent they could afford or made to move with the intention of the new landlord replacing them with homes not affordable to people who live in the Fifth Ward and who previously lived there. We don't need another fee for landlords to pay, but fees for unkempt houses. The additional fees are only passed on to renters with a higher price in the rent. In addition, if in addition to six members of the city council, and I said if, to the reparations committee are added, and only two citizens, I strongly oppose it, as the majority of these people were not and are not affected by the redlining which continues to this day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eric Potters.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yep, there you are. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Eric Potters. I'm a resident of the Village of Morton Grove, and I just wanted to make some public comments and references to the beaches. And just a point of reference, Mayor Biss, I just want to let the councilmembers know our, guess, our relationship, which stems back over 10 years. It all relates kind of comically to the city of Willman. And a gentleman by the name of John Green, who tailed me out of one of your meeting you had when you were running for office. But I won't get political. I would like to commend former Clerk Reed, who's now the trustee, in opening up the beaches. I had a, I guess, a conflict a few years ago that was taken up with former Mayor Tisdale and your Corporation Council, of which I made comments at the Administration and Public Works, meaning earlier for 30. You can reference those comments. I'm sorry for being out of breath. I just, out of the Village of Morton Grove meeting. But I do see, I guess, and foresee the future of the beaches. And opening up the beaches, I think, is a good thing, but I see what you're doing with the parking, and I see what you're doing with the vendors. You're going to be shifting revenue basically from beach token, from residents, to people that come from outside of Evanston and ticketing them, as well as charging people to be food vendors on the lakefront and establishing some type of a special use tax or amusement tax or something. So I'd like to just have you just tread slowly with this. I've personally been going to the beaches in Evanston for 45 years. I'm a fourth-generation Chicagoan. I love the beaches. But for the second time in as many as maybe 10 or 12 years, I was woken up by one of your, I guess, staff members, who at 9:00 over the weekend came and woke me, and I'm not really sure what the procedure is, but she said to me, quote-unquote, "Well, you can just tell me that you're a resident of Evanston, and I'll leave you alone." So if you guys are trying to grab revenue, I have $5.35 in my possession from last year when I was cleaning up the White House Beach most of the summer and established a relationship with a lot of people at Public Works. Everybody knew me as the guy who was cleaning up the beach. I'd like to then donate that to the city of Evanston, because you guys are so hard up for money. And with that, I'll end my public comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Cecile McHugh.
Please excuse the comments. Oh, I'm, okay, excuse me. These are really largely unprepared comments, because I was planning on speaking on something else, but so please excuse that. But I am also concerned that allowing additional food trucks will spoil our lakefront, our lakefront oasis. I agree with the earlier speaker regarding the need for public input and discussion, and I want to ask for a community meeting to discuss this issue. I thank the earlier speaker for referring to the Lakefront Master Plan and the need to carefully consider the impact of this change. If the Evanston Lakefront Master Plan is outdated, it needs to be updated, not disregarded as the next speakers seem to suggest. Seems that was my take. My specific concern is that many more food trucks, I didn't see the number planned, will increase the amount of food and crusted garbage and the proliferation of rats along the lakefront. Keep in mind that a significant part of the money the city receives from the sales tax from the food trucks will go toward garbage collection and rodent management. Is the remaining increased revenue to the city, assuming there is increased revenue after we spent for garbage collection and rodent control, worth a negative effect on our lakefront? Will the food trucks be constantly running, creating exhaust? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to go back now to Joel Freeman and see if the tech issues are resolved. Joel, are you still in the Zoom? You can also dial in by telephone, Mr. Freeman, if the Zoom is not working?
Well, I would ask that you try to call in by telephone, since it seems like there's some issue with the Zoom. While we're waiting for Mr. Freeman to do that, I just want to quickly double-check that John Alberggo, Alan Mulumbi, and Mary Rozinski, who signed up, are not currently in the Zoom. Is that correct? If that's the case, we'll go to our in-person public commenter, Sebastian Knolls.
Thank you, city council. Appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. I originally came up here to talk about R1. I received a number of calls based on it, filled with confusion on whether or not the reparations committee would actually be talked about. So I just do want to emphasize that, especially when it comes to something as sensitive as reparations, essentially when it comes to the black community as well, we look at the history when it comes to local governments, state entities, that would take advantage of black people not understanding what's going on. We need to be explicit in what our intentions are. I know that the average person just kind of scrolls through the agenda, if they actually scroll through the agenda, and then once they clicked, I mean, once I clicked that PDF link, I got confused at first as well. So I'm asking that, again, that we're transparent through this whole process. I also received a couple of calls about the document as well, and on the website, it notes that Councilmember Braithwaite, I know he's not here, is listed as the chair of the reparations committee, but at the same time, on that document, it notes that to elect the chair, that the committee itself elects the chair, it's not appointed. I know that may have confused a bit of some of the residents who voiced that opinion to me. I'm not an elected official, so I didn't have the answer to that, so I thought that I'd raise that to your attention as well, so that we can communicate that with residents, so they can understand what's going on. The next issue I wanted to touch on quickly, I request that the city council look into increasing funding for the city clerk's office to establish a vote-tracking system software for the city of Evanston, similarly to what the state of Illinois has. I know that there are a number of non-for-profit and local organizations that are working on creating vote-tracking softwares of their own, but I don't think that it should be up to advocacy groups to have to keep track of votes, and I know that it's extremely cumbersome to go through all the PDF files to really dive in and understand what was voted on, who voted which way, and who didn't. And in the meantime, I do ask that we increase the amount of detail that is present on the minutes. I know that some residents were, you know, not wanting to go through and watch three, four hours' worth of city council, and that sometimes they felt that the minutes were lacking in comparison to what was actually said in council. So I think that's a nice bridgeway in between in the meantime, as we don't have a vote-tracking system currently in place.
Fifteen seconds.
But then I do, I do ask that city council consider increasing funding to the city clerk's office to establish that resource. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now, let's go back to Joel Freeman. Joel, are you there by telephone? All right, well, I'm sorry if you're still trying to speak. The technical obstacles seem to have been too much tonight. Feel free to send an email with your comments, and we'll try to address whatever this issue was before our next meeting. That concludes our public comment, and it's time for the consent agenda. Before I offer to councilmembers to remove items from the consent agenda, I have a whole bunch of things to announce. P1 will be removed altogether. There has been a request that A12 and H1 enjoy a rule suspension to allow for both introduction and action to occur tonight, so we'll remove those to entertain such motions. There's been a request that R1 similarly enjoy a suspension of the rules to allow for introduction and action tonight. And additionally, R1 requires an amendment that the numbering of the, the numbering of the, forgive me here, the chapters, the chapters precisely need to be adjusted. And finally, pursuant to Clerk Mendoza's comment, we're also going to remove CM1 from the consent agenda to entertain an amendment there as well. So I named P1, A12, H1, R1, and CM1. Would anyone like to remove anything additional from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove H1, or did you already say that?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. P1, A12, H1, R1, and CM1.
A4.
What's that?
A4.
A4.
A10.
A10.
A2 and A7, please, Mr. Mayor.
A2 and A7. A2 and A7. Anything else? Going once, going twice. So I would entertain a motion to pass the whole consent agenda save for A2, A4, A7, A10, A12, P1, H1, R1, and CM1.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, and just A13 as well.
And A13 as well. So is there a motion to-
I will make the motion, I will make, I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda with those, uh, items removed.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves to approve the consent agenda with items P1, H1, R1, CM1, A2, A4, A7, A10, A12, and A13 removed. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Uh, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, the consent agenda passes. Uh, that brings us to item A2. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding A2?
CM1. I'll move, uh, CM1 with the, uh-
Oh, you're absolutely right.
I'll move, uh, CM1 with the amendments that, uh, Clerk Mendoza sent us earlier, uh, which is changing, uh, the person who closed the meeting from Mayor Hagerty to Mayor Biss.
Second.
Yeah, if I'm going to get credit for anything around here, let it be ending a meeting. Uh, so Councilmember Reed moves, uh, approval of the amendment, the minutes from the June fourteenth meeting with the name of the person adjourning them, uh, changed. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Uh, with the clerk, is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
On an eight-to-zero vote, the amended minutes pass. So that now brings us to A2. Uh, would anyone-
Move, I move approval of the BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity-
Councilmember Reed moves-
-ending April twenty-sixth.
Sorry, uh, thank you. Councilmember Reed moves approval of BMO Harris Credit Card Activity. Is there a second? Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye, Abstein.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
On a vote of seven to zero with one abstention, uh, A2 passes, and that brings us to item A4. Would someone like to make a motion regarding item A4?
I'll move item A4, approval of an agreement with Bodala LLC doing business as central rug and carpet for living quarters renovations at Fire Station Four.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves item A4. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Uh, is there any discussion? Uh, Councilmember Reed.
I don't know if I pulled this off, maybe, uh, I'm curious, uh, just what this is and why it wasn't budgeted? And why is it maybe necessary now?
Hello, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. Uh, so earlier this year, in February, we had an incident where there was substantial ice damming of Fire Station Four, and we have completed most of the repairs. We're still doing final portions of the roofing repair on that. Years ago, uh, two or three years ago, we finished a project at all the other fire stations to incorporate gender-neutral and privacy updates to make it easier for, um, genders, multiple genders to inhabit the same fire station and feel like they had the appropriate privacy to support their work efforts. Um, firefighters sleep at the fire stations, and so mostly this involved where there were bunk rooms, making sure the walls were high enough, and that they had closable doors, and that there were basically appropriate gender separation and privacy. So, uh, Fire Four is unique in that its bunk room is designed such, this was almost impossible to implement, and we basically sort of abandoned it at Fire Four. However, as part of the remodel, or part of the repair work from the water infiltration, we ended up having to pull out a lot of drywall to do the mold remediation, and with that, as we were going to have a carpenter and be reinstalling a bunch of drywall, it was felt like this was a really good opportunity to tackle the gender separation issue again. And for that reason, we moved forward with this project. There was a, a resolution with the City Council that was adopted on April twelfth, which I realize was not this particular City Council, that, um, allowed us to do it quickly because Fire Station Four is a critical public service building, and right now they can operate out of the bay, which they do for eight to ten hours a day, but they can't be in the living quarters. They're not really usable until we finish this project. So we've been trying to move this faster, and, um, that's why it, we did it even though it wasn't budgeted.
Okay, and then lastly, presume the issue that created this opportunity has been mitigated and resolved?
Yes. It has. We have done the mold remediation, uh, we installed the roof, the final layer of the roof. The roof is watertight and able to withstand basic weather. I wouldn't trust it to go through the roof because it's not, or through the winter because it's not durable, but we're putting a standing seam metal roof on top of it, and so those panels have been fabricated and are, I think, in the process of being shipped, they're supposed to arrive this week or next to the site, and they'll finish the roof.
Okay, uh, and then separate, so that was my last question on this. I just hope that we are, uh, it's saddening to hear that we have a fire station that was in a condition that this even happened in the first place, uh, you know, that we're putting, not your problem, but our problem, so we need to really, uh, get on the infrastructure expenditures to make sure that our firefighters are safe inside of the fire department as they're sleeping, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on item A4? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
I had a comment that I forgot to make. I will be an aye or else my no looks negative. So I will be an aye. I, I spoke to Laura about the MWBE concerns I have, just for the record.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
On this matter, there are eight voting aye, uh, none voting nay, and, uh, item A4 passes. Um, that brings us to item A7. Would someone like to make a motion on item A7?
I move approval of, uh, item A7, which is the renewal of the vending contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Councilmember Sufferton moves approval of item A7. Uh, Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Uh, Councilmember Sufferton.
Uh, sure, I just have a couple of questions, and I suppose in the absence of Director Hemingway, that Kimberly, would you be the appropriate person?
Um, I can answer questions, but I actually-
Uh, oh, thank you. Karen Hawk, our Assistant, uh, Parks and Recreation Director is on Zoom, so if Karen can show herself, please.
Um, I'm trying to show my video and it's not letting me.
Okay.
If, I'm all right proceeding with, oh, hey, Karen.
Oh.
Oh, man.
Yeah, okay.
Oh. All right, well, Karen, is it all right if I go ahead, or you? Oh, hey, all right, right on. Um, so I have, I have a couple of questions, uh, they're all process questions. One, is this fall under Parks and Recreation because that's where the majority of the machines are, or how did, how did this get assigned to Parks and Recreation rather than a different department in the city?
Um, I, I'm not certain of the answer to that. My understanding is it has fallen under both purchasing and, um, Parks and Rec, um, for the past, at least for this past RFP. There are, um, vending, vending machines in all of the recs, almost all of the rec centers, so I'm assuming that probably because that's where a majority of them lie.
Okay, uh, thank you. And, and then Karen, this may be more for Nick. There's a, um, mention in the memo of, uh, an in-kind donation, is that in writing anywhere? It's not in any of the materials that was provided to us. Uh, do you know anything about the five thousand dollars in in-kind donations annually?
So I can tell you that Mark Venn does, um, do in-kind donations. He, in 2020, um, Mark Venn donated, um, um, items for the EOC as well as, um, events that Parks and Recreation have held, and to include the Zombie Scramble, the Community Picnic. Um, obviously those were prior to 2020, um, but he, I don't know where it's written other than in the memo. Um, I can look to see if there is something specific in the, um, the wording.
Oh, yeah, I, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a promise, but it's not an obligation, right? It's, it's, um, but it's mentioned here, um, in, as underfunding sources, and I believe that's in, uh, an effort to encourage us to vote yes on it. And if we're gonna do that, I'd like to see things like that in writing somewhere. Uh, and Karen, I know that this is not your memo or your thing, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so maybe that's just more statement I'll put out there, uh, for staff, uh, going forward. And then just one final process thing, which again, Karen, is not your thing, it probably is not the thing of anybody in this room, but I would expect that when we are looking at renewals of contracts that are July first, 2021, we would get them before June twenty-eighth, 2021, especially when we're talking about a three-year contract. We knew this was coming, so I, I would just like to, um, make a note of that and ask that city management be more cognizant of that, that, uh, you know, we deserve a little bit more time to look at things like this. And Karen, again, that's not yours, I appreciate you sticking around and answering my questions, uh, but I'd just like to make a note of that. Thanks.
And can I speak to that end? Um, the reason the delay of the contract to City Council was really due to the pandemic. Now, if we, um, understand that the community centers have reopened, uh, however, um, because of the, the current status of where we were at the time, prior to, um, May, we were not sure of the, if the buildings would be fully able to have full capacity, so it would not been, uh, to our benefit to renew a contract at that point. Once we realized that that contract would be necessary as our buildings are beginning to reopen, uh, it did come for you all. So recognizing what you're saying, we, we tried to get these in a timely fashion, so they will not be at the last minute and duly noted to that for next year.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly, I appreciate it.
Um, well, the whole board lit up, so, um, Corporation Council Commons will speak next, followed by Councilmembers Reed, Fleming, Kelly.
I just want to clarify for the members of council that the initial term is set to expire Wednesday, and this is for a one-year renewal, so this-
No, no, and here's, let me clarify when I said three years. This is something that we voted on in 2018. I'm saying we knew for three years that July first, 2021, was the date where this would expire and there'd be a chance for renewal. Kimberly, I take what you said, that's true and valid, right? My, my point is, I would hope in the future that we can make an effort, as we calendar things, to not have renewals come up this close to the time when they need to be renewed. That's just the point I wanted to make.
Councilmember Reed.
Oh, yes, uh, Ms. Hawk or, uh, Ms. Richardson, I, I don't remember if I saw this in the memo, uh, what was roughly the 2019 revenue that the city realized from this, or 20, you know, maybe 2017 through 2019? What's the annual trend roughly?
Fifty thousand over three years.
Yes.
Correct, fifty, just over fifty thousand over the course, uh, from 2018 through present.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Fleming.
Um, yeah, so my concern, whether it's in the actual memo or the contract, is the five thousand dollar, um, in-kind donation that goes to the Parks Director. Um, realizing it's not a ton of money, I think we also just need to be very clear, I mean, this did not go off for RFP because I assume with COVID, we didn't know it was going to be open and so on and so forth, so we went with the vendor we had just for another year. However, again, we, I just have a lot of concerns when we talk about people's proposal, including, um, cash donations. I know Mark Venn does do a lot of donations, they donate to the food pantry, those kind of donations I think are, are just kind of extras, and I would hope they're doing those because they want to be good business partners and good citizens here in Evanston, but when we start talking about giving contracts, and then they're going to give us, I mean, obviously we already split the proceeds, so they're giving cash anyway, but that they're giving additional money to, um, directors or departments, I just do not think that that's good government practices. So I would, um, be inclined to support this minus the five thousand dollar in-kind donation. If they wanted to say they're going to do donations to city events, or, you know, twenty boxes of granola bars to be used at, you know, camp giveaway or something, a five thousand dollar in-kind donation just seems inappropriate, um, for a, a city contractor, and I would hate to set the precedent that other people feel like I'm going to sweeten the deal for my RFP or whatever they're doing with a cash, you know, in-kind donation to the director who is then obviously responsible for reviewing my, my, um, my contract with the city. So I would move this forward if we remove this statement here from the memo, given that it's not in the RFP, I mean, not the RFP, the contract anyhow. Other than that, I will be unable to support this.
Uh, thank you for that information, and, and just to be point, there was an RFP process that occurred the prior, um, in 2018, um, 2019, excuse me, uh, and they were the sole, um, responder to the RFP. Uh, so, uh, as part of that RFP, uh, they did go through the proper, um, purchasing processes. As to that statement, I do recognize that how it was worded was not rightfully worded. It goes to the city, not to the director. I think the reason it stated director is because it mostly goes towards community programs that are coming out of Parks and Rec, but I recognize that the way that it is stated in the memo, it does make it seem like it's going directly to the, uh, director instead of going to the, the department to support community activities.
Councilmember Kelly.
Um, who did we contract with prior to 2018? Was it the same company?
From my understanding, Mark Venn Company has been the only bidder who has responded to our RFP processes, from the, for the duration of the time that I've been working with the city.
So do you know how long we've been using Mark Venn?
Uh, over, I want to say, I would say over ten years at this point.
Twenty, ten, oh-
But I can't speak to anything prior to me starting, I'll have to go, we pull the report.
Okay, so for a long time. I would just hope, uh, maybe this year we can explore also other options, like Morton Grove and Wilmette, I know they manage their own machines, I mean, because we get, you know, we get money back from Mark Venn doesn't mean we couldn't in fact be generating more revenue, and I ask that we, we take this year to explore other options, since we've been with this one company for such a long time.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Uh, seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
On a vote of six voting aye and two voting nay, uh, item A7 passes. That brings us to item A10. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding item A10?
I move A10, Resolution sixty-six dash R dash twenty-one, authorizing city manager to execute a contract amendment to the commercial business institutional multifamily residential building waste service agreement with Groot to extend said agreement.
Is there a second? Councilmember Fleming moves item A10. Councilmember Revell, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yes, uh, I realize this is not for action. Rodent issues are, uh, huge, uh, a huge issue within my ward, uh, and I've developed, uh, a new habit, uh, since being elected of walking through alleys. Uh, I'm sure some of my, uh, long-term council members may have done this as well, and, uh, you look at, uh, dumpsters, and so not only have I walked through alleys in Evanston, but I'd sometimes go across the board and walk through alleys in Chicago, uh, when I'm feeling risky. And, uh, what I've noticed is that, uh, you know, we have the one contract with Groot for our, um, condos, I believe the contract is with LRS, Lakeshore Recycling Services. Um, in Chicago, what I've noticed is a panoply of various different bins, uh, and it seems as though those bins are in better condition than ours, particularly the large group bins. So, uh, yes, we have the smaller single-family home, uh, bins, and then we have the larger, uh, dumpsters for multifamily, uh, residential and business. for multifamily residential and businesses. And when I look at Evanston, our group bins, almost universally, have been chewed through by various vector, rats and raccoons or whatever, mostly rodents. And then I walk through Chicago, and their bins seem fairly uniformly intact, and a lot of times, they aren't using Groot. And so I'm wondering, and then also in the eighth ward, particularly on the east side of the ward, south of Howard, between Howard and Oakton, and east of Ridge, I am receiving emails, which feels like on a, you know, several times a day regarding rodents in the ward. And I think a large part of what we have discussed, that what I have discussed with residents is that the rodents are getting into the bins. Our rodents are, you know, not so much one-person joke that our rodents aren't really dying of the, eating the pest control stuff, but they're most are dying of obesity and diabetes in our ward because of the accessibility of the dumpsters. And so I'm wondering what we can do to get Groot to step up their game and ensure that our bins are more secure, that they're replacing bins that have been worn out on a more regular basis. So Director Stonebeck, can you provide feedback on that?
Good evening, Mayor Biss, city clerk and council member, Dave Stoneback, Public Works Agency Director. We do work with Groot now to try to find properties that are not, that they're overfilling their actual dumpsters where the lid won't close. They send us pictures every month of the, of the properties that they identify, and then we work with the Health Department to engage with the properties to either have them, well, increase their service one way or the other. As far as the dumpsters are concerned, the actual condition of them, we can put more pressure on them. I, we get monthly, we meet with Groot quarterly, and we get reports from them with, from the number of dumpsters that they have replaced and the number of lids that they have replaced. More recently, in within your ward, I believe we did send some of our sanitation crews down there to check on the condition of the lids down there and made a list for them, requesting them to replace those lids. So as we become aware of these issues, we try to address them, but we do not have the manpower right now to, to just go out and look at lids on a continuous basis. Groot is well aware of our concern with the, with the rodent situation and that we're trying to address that, and, and we're making that as big of a deal as we can at this time.
And can you say publicly, what is the cost, what is the cost of this agreement to the city of Evanston?
The city doesn't pay for this agreement at all. The Groot charges the people that get the service. Evanston actually has an administrative fee tacked on to that cost that Groot then pays us, and I'm sorry, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
But this does not apply to single-family homes?
No, this, this particular extension is only for the franchise agreement for commercial buildings.
And so for single-family homes, how do we charge for trash collection? Does, in the same way, does Groot, do we afford that cost directly on the single-family homeowners, or?
The, the city of Evanston, as part of our utility bill, along with your water and sewer bill, there's a sanitation charge that's applied there. That sanitation charge not only includes what Groot charges us to collect the single-family homes, but we also add the charge for the city of Evanston's employees that collect the recycling.
So is there, you mentioned that for the multifamily units, there's a, I forget the term they use, but a surcharge?
Administrative fee.
Administrative fee that the city tacks on. Does that administrative fee apply to single-family homes?
No.
So then?
Administrative fee is only on the commercial franchise agreement where Groot charges the, the commercial properties directly. Evanston has an administrative fee on top of what Groot's cost would be, and Groot reimburses us that administrative fee.
So I, as someone who lives in an apartment, would have presumably in my rent tacked on this administrative fee, although I would argue that it's more efficient to collect trash from a multi-unit building than it is to collect trash from a single-family home. So I'm just curious why there's this fee for, that would be passed on, in this case, to renters or, you know, multifamily dwellings, but wouldn't be tacked on to residential units where it's actually maybe less efficient to come by and pick up, you know, trash for one 40,000 square foot lot?
And before you respond, I just want to flag that the, your five minutes are up. Obviously, we can finish this answer, but then I'd like to bring this to an end.
I do not have an answer for you as to why there is administrative fee. And again, I don't know what that dollar cost is. If, if we were to lose that administrative fee, then it would, the solid waste fund, which is already in the hole, would continue to go further into the hole unless we raised the fees to everybody else.
Thank you. Council member Burns.
Does this apply to roll-off dumpsters at all? That might not be.
It does. It's a construction dump, uh, yes.
But even if someone in a single-family home requests a roll-off, this extension has to do with that, too?
It would, yes.
If, so I had a resident who was concerned because the, the price to purchase a roll-off dumpster from Groot was a lot higher than other competitors, which is not really a competition because we have this franchise agreement with them, where they can only purchase a roll-off dumpster through Groot, correct?
That is correct. And again, the administrative fee applies to that service as well. So in my opinion, that is probably why Groot's prices are higher than their competitors. The city code and it only allows Groot to provide that service. You can get an exception to it if Groot does not provide the service. So if somebody is removing asbestos, a different hauler can do that, but then the city code requires that hauler to pay an annual fee to get a license, and then they have to provide the bonds and insurance, and then they also have to notify us how many cubic yards of dumpster capacity they're providing, and then pay the city an equivalent to the administrative fee once they get the contract. So I doubt very much that other competitors, when they quote the price for the dumpster, are calculating in the Evanston administrative fee. So first of all, they weren't, according to city code, they couldn't come in to do that. And then if we see them doing it, we make them remove their dumpsters right away, or tell them, the property owner, to get an exception and explain why. And then once they do all that, and then they see that they're gonna have to pay this administrative fee, all of a sudden, they start using Groot. So I don't think Groot's prices are out of line. I just think it's our, the Evanston administrative fee that is, that has raised the cost. And the reason we use one vendor is that we don't have multiple trucks coming into town, going through the same alley. So if, and, and this was switched before I was the Public Works Director, but within 15 years, where we used to have multiple vendors collecting multiple dumpsters at all the different commercial businesses. And when we reduced it to one contractor, that was part of, more or less of a CARP goal before it was CARP, is to reduce the amount of trucks that are going wear and tear on our alleys and driving through, you could have three different companies basically driving the same route. So this is, it's sustainable to have only one vendor provide that service for us.
Is there any further discussion on this issue? Council member Reed?
I just wonder if, is this time-sensitive? Could, I would love to, this is an extremely huge issue in my ward, and when I say that I get emails almost every day, multiple times a day about rodents. I forward some of the stuff to you, Dave, so I think you're somewhat aware of, aware of it. Is this, is this time-sensitive? If, if we were to hold off on this, I'd love to have a conversation with Groot, you know, so they understand how serious it is that they are on top of keeping their bins in order. So is this time-sensitive?
The current contract runs through October, I believe. We would have great difficulties getting a different vendor between now and to put out a request for a proposal.
Sure, sure.
With or without this extension, we can definitely arrange a meeting with Groot and any council member that wanted to participate, and we could have Groot come to a council meeting if you so desire.
I would, I would love to hold this for one meeting and have either a meeting with Groot or have Groot come to a council meeting so they understand how, how important this is. So I will make a motion to hold this until our next meeting.
Council member Reed moves to hold item A10. Is there a second?
Can I get clarification or do I have to just vote?
You can ask.
Okay. So your thought is holding this allows you to meet with Groot, although we're not sure we can get another provider, even if the Groot meeting outcome is, I mean, I, you know, I understand the rodent problem, but you would meet with Groot individually or you want, I'm just trying to think of the timing, right, of our agenda.
Yeah, I would either love to meet with them with a number of council members, whoever else shares this concern, or have them come to council before all of us, whatever folks are seeking to, to do.
So I'm, I, you know, I have been here longer, so I've spoken to Groot many times about their lids and so on and so forth, but I'm happy to support your hold to do that. I just don't want to send you on a hope and a prayer that one meeting with Groot is going to change the outcome of rats in the city.
No, I certainly.
I just want to be honest.
Yeah, certainly don't expect that, but I think, you know, with the hold as well, they'll understand that, hey, there's something a little different here. Money may be on the line. So that was my hope.
If I may make a suggestion, that I could ask Groot to come to the next APW meeting, let them know that this got held and have them come to APW or to the city council, whichever the council members prefer.
That's, sounds good. I know that the city manager also had a question.
Yes, I was wondering if it's possible, just because wanting to make sure, again, timeliness of contract. If we do move forward with the, with the resolution, would it allow, before we execute the agreement, can we have that meeting scheduled with you and no more than two other aldermen who would be interested in participating in that meeting? Just because the one thing I would just be concerned, Dave, when does this, after this agreement for one-year extension, when will we be going out for RFP with our garbage
We are currently advertising to fill the solid waste coordinator's position, and once that person is on board, their top priority will be to prepare a request for proposal to go out for bid for this or for proposals, and there'll be a, I assume, a fairly different scope of work that we're looking for the next hauler to provide us. And so it, just if everybody's aware of how many dumpsters are out there, to switch vendors will be a, a challenging thing. So it is something that we'll want to bid out, get proposals for in the very near future. But again, I don't think holding this one meeting will jeopardize that because we don't even have that person on staff yet.
Well, I think we have the information we need. I know that council member Reed has, has requested the hold. Is there a second for that?
I can second that.
So two council members have requested a hold. Is, does anyone move to overrule the hold? Seeing none, the matter is held until the next meeting. Thank you very much. This brings us to item A12. Council member Sufferton's temporary, one hopes departure from the room was poorly timed, but he's back. So council member Sufferton requested that we suspend rules to allow for introduction and action of item A12. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would, and I do. I make a motion to that effect. I ask that we consider this for introduction and action tonight, and I'm happy to discuss it.
Second.
Second to the suspension of the rule. Sufferton moves we suspend the rules to allow for introduction and action tonight. Council member Reed, seconds, and the Corporation Counsel would like to comment.
I just had a question because there were a couple of items that were on the agenda for suspension of the rules for intro and action, and I wanted to ask Mr. Mayor if you were intending to suspend the rules for each of those, or are you?
I was planning on taking them on separately. So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to allow for introduction and action. Will the clerk call the roll?
Council member Burns?
Aye.
Council member Sufferton?
Aye.
Council member Revel?
No.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Council member, council member Fleming?
Aye.
Council member Kelly?
No.
Council member Nguyen?
No.
Four voting in favor and four voting against, the motion fails and the rules are not suspended. Now, would anyone like to make a motion regarding item A12? Council member Reed.
I move item A12, sorry. I move item A12, ordinance 57021, amending city code section 10, 11, 10, limited parking to add a pilot program at various lakefront locations.
Council member Reed moves item A12. Is there a second?
Second.
Council member Fleming, seconds. Is there any discussion? Council member Sufferton?
Sure. Just real quick, everyone who wants free beaches next year, be aware, the money has to come from somewhere. And in this instance, this would be giving us information so we can tell how much money we can raise by charging people for parking who don't live here. So nobody who you represent would be affected by this at all. So when we come to this for action, I'd like you all to just consider what you're willing to do in order to get free beaches next year. That's all. We all have an obligation to find the money somewhere. This is, in my mind, a good somewhere.
Thank you. The next speaker will be council member Reed, followed by council member Nguyen.
Yes, I also echo that statement. I, I do believe anyone who's supporting free beaches, I don't want to put the onus of finding the revenue for free beaches completely on the beaches, right? We can find revenue from a whole host of places, but it is pretty effective to find the revenue at the beaches. And I believe we should, we're here, we're here now, and so I'll just limit it to this. I think it makes sense to charge for parking. I think we can expand this later. It's a pilot program. The money is well-spent whether we keep this or not, as, as Mr. Rivera noted. I will say to some of the public commentators, you know, there are comments about, you know, the man-made world that we live in and the beauty of our parks and our beaches, and yes, I do not believe that we, as a city, should be charging to view the universes or gods, whatever your belief is, creation, the beaches. I think those, the beach itself should be free and accessible, but the monstrosity that is pavement and the man-made noisy world that we have made, I do not believe that, you know, folks should feel entitled to free parking, particularly along our lakefront. I think, you know, there are plenty of alternative modes of transportation that are better for our environment, that actually protect that planet, that, you know, and the beauty of our lakefront, you know, by not having as many cars and exhaust from a car, from cars, polluting the air near our lakefront. I think this, this, this makes sense, and as was noted earlier, the cost of providing these surface lots is astronomical to the city, and it makes sense that people chip in the actual cost of maintaining this infrastructure and that we end, start to roll back the practice of subsidizing parking and free parking and the use of vehicles throughout our city.
The next speaker will be council member.
Nguyen.
Just the, the thing when you all, there's telepathy. It's beautiful. The next speakers will be in order, council members Nguyen, Nguyen, Kelly, and Fleming.
I, I don't support this, I, for a number of reasons. One, I, I was not in support of free beaches. I thought that needed to have study and analysis in order to determine how we would make up that revenue. I thought that was hasty, and we needed much more discussion on that, and I would not be in support of going to 100% free beaches next year either, without a thorough study and an understanding of how we recommend, recover that money. I respectfully disagree, Alderman Sufferton, that actually, a number of us on the council here, our residents would be directly affected by this because what we know is that people will hunt for free. will hunt for free parking, and there is free parking adjacent to the city, these, the proposed areas, that people will find, and they will park in them. So the streets surrounding these parking lots that were designated for our lakefront will, will fill up with folks who will look to avoid the parking fee. I, and I do agree with a number of the speakers. I think one of the things we've prided ourselves on in Evanston is our beautiful parks and our lakefront, and the fact that unlike our neighbors, we don't charge people or make it so restrictive that someone can't come to our lakefront. At $3 an hour, a family would, who came for an afternoon, would end up spending over $12. And if you came with several families, which is really what you see along the lakefront all the time, is groups of families who come. And so suddenly, a day in the park is now $25 or more. So I also think that we need to study this more to understand what the impact would be and what the revenues would be from this. I think this is hasty, and I don't know that we'll see the revenue that we're expecting. So I have a lot of concerns about this. I think that we do need to understand the impact on the community more. I disagree with charging for our lakefront parks to anyone. I think that has been a tenet of Evanston, that we are open. And I also have, I still don't think that that was a wise decision to make our beaches free this summer without some prior planning, because my understanding is we're just relying on the honor system. So, and, and as soon as the word gets out, not very many people are paying. So, you know, once again, I think we, we do need process. We need the community to weigh in on this. We need more study. So I'm, I'm not in support of this.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talking about access to the beach, I think my guiding principles are that I would like all Evanston residents to be able to enjoy the lakefront. So emphasis on all, I think we've addressed that or started to address that by making beaches free more often than they have been and working towards making them free for all Evanston residents every day next summer. And in terms of enjoyment, I think we're going to also touch on this when we talk about food trucks, but what is one person's enjoyment might be another person's worst nightmare. And I think what is, what is lacking here is public engagement on both of these topics, food trucks and parking. And certainly, a very strong argument can be made in favor of charging a nominal fee to non-Evanston residents for parking that would help us pay for the beach costs. But there is an impact on Evanston residents, both, especially those near, nearby the beaches. So I'm kind of on the fence on this one, but in this case, I am not going to support it at this point. But if there is adequate public engagement on this topic, and we'll see how that discussion goes, I am not saying I'm opposed to charging for parking at some point in the future.
Councilmember Kelly.
So yes, I think, you know, our lakefront is a very beautiful coveted part of Evanston, and it should remain a, it should become an even more welcoming place. I don't think this is the right place to generate revenue, just like I think it's the wrong place to generate revenue in making people buy tokens. And I think it's a nominal, ultimately a nominal amount of money that we'd be generating from this, and I also question how, you know, difficult it might be to undo this once we get started. And I agree with councilmember Nusma about public engagement. I think it's very important that we are engaged with the public before we would take such a measure like this. So at this point, I cannot support this.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't really, you know, the beach is a whole separate situation we should have a conversation about. However, I think my conflict comes in that we are talking about, again, I don't know how much money it's going to generate, but we're talking about potential revenue generation for, that would not hurt our citizens in terms of them paying, and they pay for parking everywhere else around our city. So I've been here, you know, last four years, and we've raised, you know, parking tickets, we have raised parking fees downtown, you know, we have done a variety of things around parking that people have screamed at us about. Yeah, this is one place we have free parking, and people do utilize it, and so the idea that we could charge someone from out of town, I'm, I'm not sure how we, we, you know, say that that's not okay, but we charge people who live in town to go downtown to eat. We charge people who live in town, when they forget to move their car for street cleaning, they get a $75 ticket. So I guess I'm just a little conflicted as to how this is such a horrible idea, particularly for a pilot, and then it's not going to impact our residents unless they don't have a wheel tax that they've paid. But anywhere else they go around the city, they are charged for parking, and we have heard them scream at us over and over again about how much it costs to park here. We've heard the merchants talk about how people are going to Skokie and Wometta shop and eat because they don't charge there, yet somehow or another, for people to go to the beach and pay for parking, you know, is, you know, a horrible idea. In terms of some of the comments about the Lakefront Master Plan, it is very old. I'm sure it took a lot of time to make, but as Ms. Richardson even pointed out with our strategic plan, it is also very old. And so I think if we're going to make a commitment to the lakefront, we probably need to look at a new lakefront master plan. I do appreciate the idea about citizen engagement, but who is going, I mean, I imagine we could have some Evanston residents come and say this is horrible, but I imagine some of the residents in my ward in particular are going to say, if we're going to let Chicago people come and park at the beach for free, then they want to be able to park at the beach for free when they go to the movies or wherever they're going, right? And so I just think it's a, it's a pretty big conflict for us to act as if it is outrageous to charge people who are not from Evanston to enjoy our lakefront when we are charging people who live in Evanston to do a variety of tasks around the city. So I do support this. I would also bring up that we had talked about doing a citywide parking study that was not voted by, you know, not this council, but the previous council did not want to do, and then we said we were going to do it, then we couldn't do it because of COVID. So hopefully, that's still on the pipeline. But had we done the citywide parking study many years ago, I think we'd have a better idea of how to deal with parking all around Evanston.
Councilmember Revelle.
Well, I'll just add that I, I'm concerned about the financial model here. I know that we would be creating all these signs, signs and parking stations and things like that, which we can repurpose and use later, but there, there would be the expense of parking enforcement, expense of signs to tell people where they can and can't park. And, and I really think the, the revenues won't be coming in to support those expenses because, as has been mentioned just a few minutes ago, people, it's going to be very easy for them to place, find a place to park for free just a block away. And I think if we were to have a community engagement, I think the people we hear from would be in the adjoining residential neighborhoods who would be pretty concerned about additional parking clogging their neighborhoods.
So we've now heard from everyone who asked to speak for a first time, so we'll go to the second round, and councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton.
I just want to note that currently, one of my colleagues, who has a bit of lakefront mentioned, that a family, let's say of four, who went to the lakefront under this system, you know, from Chicago or somewhere else, not Evanston, they would pay, you know, $12 for four hours of parking, let's say. That same family would pay $40 just to walk onto the beach. And so if, if the concern is about accessibility and making our beaches inviting, well, you know, $12 to park your car for people versus $40 just to walk onto the beach, the $40 seems pretty uninviting to me. I'd also say there's plenty of time, the beach issue is separate but related in the sense that we understand as a council that we will have to replace that revenue, but there's, you know, there's plenty of time to have that discussion. And this is a pilot that can be modified next year, undone next year. We can do what we need to and easily reconfigure the purchased equipment if need be, but I think we should be willing to try. And, you know, if, we, we won't know if the neighborhood adjacent to our lakefront will, you know, will have this new induced demand that burdens the neighborhood so much until we actually try it out. And if it does, then again, we can change it, but this is what a pilot is for, it's to get the data, get the information, so we can make adjustments if need be, and that is a part of the public engagement process. You know, this isn't a permanent law. We can, we can, we can undo it so we can get some actual data. And so I'd be hoping that folks would support, particularly if you're supportive of making our beaches truly accessible to folks, that you would support moving this forward on this limited basis.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Kelly.
Sure. I just wanted to ask if, is Mike Rivera on the call, or if not, I can just ask my questions in a rhetorical sense. Do you know, Kimberly? I don't have...
Good evening, councilmember Sufferton, Mike Rivera, our team manager.
Hey, man. How are you tonight, sir?
I'm good.
Doing all right. But I'm sure you've heard some of the questions here, and so I just wanted to, and there's definitely valid concerns about when you have charged for parking adjacent to free parking. And I wanted to ask, would there be a way to maybe extend, and we wouldn't do this tonight, but like extend Evanston resident-only parking to some of the streets further west? Would that maybe alleviate some of that? Is, and a follow-up, second part of that, and I'll let you jam after that. Where are we on the viability of a citywide parking study now that we are getting out of COVID? Is it something that we can undertake and get meaningful data?
Yes, we had gone through the RFP process last year. We had selected WGI as the, as the company that would be doing the citywide parking study. We just talked with them about a week ago, and we are monitoring and tracking our parking revenues and use and occupancy week by week. We are currently about 55% of where we were prior to COVID, and we have decided that once we get up to 70%, we will release that study to WGI so they can start their work. And by the time that they, we do the release, they'll have 12 months to compile data thereafter. So by the time they're doing their study, we'll be well in excess of 75 to 80% while they're starting to perform their studies throughout the town.
Okay, great. And then, I mean, do you see any, you know, you had cited other communities, and I don't know if you dug this deep, but I mean, I assume in the other communities, the charge for, for beachfront parking, they don't have adjacent free parking? Or maybe they do, and they have some sort of residential restrictions that help there?
No, that's incorrect. There's a lot of, for instance, Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, they, they charge for parking near the, near the beach, it's metered parking near the beach areas, and then they have free parking in adjacent neighborhoods. What we have found is that people are, you know, there's a select group of people that are going to always look for free parking, and they are fine with walking four or five blocks to obtain that free parking. But what we've also noticed is that people are also willing to pay for convenience and accessibility. So if they arrive at the, at the lakefront assets and there's empty parking spaces, it can be conveniently located to where they want to be, they're going to be willing to pay $3 per hour or $10 a flat rate for the day, whatever it is, but they're definitely going to be willing to pay for convenience.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
I just want to respond to councilmember Reed's points about our already existing restrictions on the beach. So let's not add yet even more restrictive measures to our lakefront. That's what I'm asking this evening. And also, I think we should be careful about making a political football out of, you know, beach access, that we should have had beach, beach access in my assessment for a long time now for Evanston residents. And so there are many other places where we can tap into those funds. We're talking about a half a million dollars, not 1.2 million dollars. And so I would love, I'm delighted that we're going to have, thank you, councilmember Fleming, that we're going to have a finance and budget committee. And like I say, there are plenty of other places where we can find, find that money easily. Thank you.
No one else is requesting recognition, so with that, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
So if I'm understanding the rules properly, this being a 4-4 tie, I am called upon to vote. I won't let it get to my head, I promise, but I vote aye. And so on, five voting in favor and four voting opposed, A12 passes. But recall, the motion to suspend the rules failed, so it passed for introduction. It'll come back for our next meeting, at which point it'll, at a minimum, have to be amended to change the date. That brings us to item A13. Would someone like to make a motion regarding A13?
I, I remove, so I will, I remove this from the consent agenda. If someone else wants to move it, happy to...
I'll make a motion on A13, ordinance 64-0-21, amending the hotel tax.
Is there a second? Councilmember Nusma moves item A13. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, who's the staff person that can speak to this? Oh, Nicholas, Council Cummings. So can you tell me what the new rate is?
It's in here.
Or what the amendment is here?
Good evening, members of city council, Mayor Biz, council, sorry, Clerk Mendoza, Nicholas Cummings, corporation council, discussing item A13 on behalf of Kate Lewis, who is out. There's not a new rate. The only amendment to this piece of the code is who is actually going to be collecting the tax. And so what we found in terms of enforcement, the way the code was originally written, the owners of the properties are responsible for remitting the tax. Oftentimes, they utilize a third party to allow for their property to be rented, so it's VRBO, HomeAway, Airbnb, Expedia, all these other third-party intermediaries. So we've worked with them to come up with language to amend our code to allow them to collect the tax and then pay it to us, as opposed to having the homeowner or the hotel owner or something like that, they, them being responsible for paying the tax, we're going to have the third party collect it when they actually collect the payment and then remit the tax to us monthly.
And if someone does not remit the hotel tax, let's say they have hundreds of thousands of dollars, that they do not pay the city in hotel tax, what is the recourse for that? And how do, how do we track enforcement of, you know, folks actually remitting this tax?
So there's several ways. I can't answer the second part of your question in terms of how we're tracking that. That's something that's specifically within Ms. Lewis's purview as the acting...
Collector.
Head of the collector's office. But from my understanding is we can take those individuals, and we have done this in the past, to administrative hearings and enter a judgment lien against these individuals so that if they ever try to do something with a property, whether it be sell or otherwise tender the property, we have a lien on the property and the amount of the lien, of the taxes that they owe the city, and that they have to pay those taxes before they're able to do so. Same thing as if someone files bankruptcy or anything of that nature. We get notice of their intent to try and discharge any debt, and then we, my department gets notified of that, and then we have an obligation or an opportunity, depending upon the amount, to intervene in those actions to try and make sure we collect on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, item A13 passes. That brings us to item H1, which my understanding is there's a request to suspend the rules to allow for introduction and action. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I move approval of item H, there we go, sorry. Move approval of item H1, ordinance 73021, amending the city code to change restrictions on food and drink vendors at city beaches and parks. I will not waste our time, as I can read the room, and I will not move for suspension of the rules, but I will move this for... not move for suspension of the rules. But I will move this for introduction.
Great. Councilmember Reed moves item H1 for introduction. Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes, yes. So as was discussed earlier with, I'm sorry, I'm seeking recognition of the floor, but I think I, yes.
Councilmember Reed.
And so as was discussed earlier, just a few minutes ago, regarding the parking, this is another opportunity to, to realize revenue, to offset the cost of, of continuing the practice to charge access to our beaches. You know, to say that there, you know, this wasn't transparent, or there was no discussion, well, this went to Human Services several weeks ago. This was discussed at Human Services. Residents had an ability there. The forum also existed today for residents to give input and feedback on this. So, so we're going through the, the process on, on this. You know, this is a, again, this is, this is not building new structures along the lakefront. We're not building a facility. So this can be undone if it does not work out, if it creates issues, unforeseen issues. We can make amendments to this in years to come. Again, this will just give us an opportunity to see, to, to make real-time adjustments for next year, as we will begin to rely on this more. We're not currently charging sales tax, so this will not generate sales tax. So this year, it will only generate the revenue from the actual licenses. And the goal is for next year to have sales tax online, and to figure that out between now and then. Again, this won't detrimentally change the lakefront. Again, there were no permanent structures here. It is push carts that will exist along the lakefront, and food trucks that can be moved, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the current ordinance, which, if I'm understanding it correctly, currently forbids all food vendors from the lakefront. That would include food trucks, that would include ice cream trucks, that would include a little push cart. Is that, is that a correct reading of the current law, the current ordinance?
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. You are correct. The current ordinance prohibits food operations at our beaches and our parks within 100 feet of distance, with exception of the authorization of the city manager. And that's how we were able to have our lakefront concession stands. Unfortunately, we didn't have them last year and this year, largely due to COVID. But it does allow the city manager to authorize who goes on, on the beach. But according to our code, you are debarred, if you are a food truck or any other food operator, to operate at our beaches and our parks without the authorization of the city manager.
Has the city manager granted such authorization to any food trucks?
Not, not to my knowledge. I've been, I've been in Evanston for a long time, and we've never had food trucks at our lakefront or our parks.
The food truck reported to have been operating at Lighthouse Beach was therefore in noncompliance with city code.
You're right.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. To the, to the issue of beachfront enjoyment and access to all, I personally would like to be able to have a taco when I go to the beach, or grab a hamburger. And I think adding food trucks and adding access to amenities like that at the beachfront would increase the ability of Evanston residents to enjoy the lakefront. However, I'm also committed to the, the public engagement process when we're talking about our community's most valuable natural resource. And I don't want to move too fast on this, when I think we can, you know, take a step back and do some public engagement, build some consensus, and let me convince everybody how nice it would be to have a taco at the beach. Another concern I have is regarding the ability of the city to collect sales tax from food trucks. And it's my understanding in conversation with restaurant operators that most food trucks are operating with credit card purchases and the point-of-sale system that would allow fairly easy, you know, tracking and collection of sales tax. And most transactions at food trucks are made on credit cards as opposed to cash. So it should not be that difficult to, to collect revenue from the food trucks. But that's not my main driver for wanting to be able to allow them access. Thank you.
Seeing that no one else is, oh, seeing that everyone's taking recognition, next will be councilmember Nguyen, followed by councilmembers Kelly and Fleming.
Councilmember Kelly was ahead of me. Yeah. I'd like to go after her.
I just want to say, I grew up going to Lighthouse Beach with, and there was always a truck there, it seems like, forever. We've had a truck at Lighthouse Beach, and it's definitely has seemed to be a benefit. And as well, I remember ice skating on the lagoon, and there was always, you could get hot chocolate there in the evenings while ice skating, and this was really lovely. So, you know, I don't know what happened to that. But, and I do think we should revisit our lakefront, our, our lakefront master plan to see if there's, you know, how we can potentially incorporate some of those sort of amenities. I do, I would like to know, at this point, I'm not quite clear on the, like, the location of these, of the food trucks. This to me, I, you know, like I said, I've seen them at Lighthouse Beach, and I've enjoyed the hot chocolate on the lagoon. I'm having hard times right now envisioning, you know, large food trucks, though I do love food trucks. But I'm still a little bit unclear as to how this would all play out, where they would station. And so I don't know if you could answer that question. And also, I do want to say, I do think it's very important, the public participation. I think we want buy-in on this. So whether it's about developing a lakefront plan, where our residents, you know, feel that they are participants and have a voice, I just think that's, that's really key as we make these changes.
Our proposal is to allow a limited number of food trucks at the lakefront. We do not want to allow more than three food trucks at the lakefront. And that's to make it easier for us to administer enforcement and inspection and compliance activities. Where they are going to be parked is something that we will work with our parking division to figure that out. It will have to be just right outside the lakefront where they will be parked. So that's something that we still need to flesh out and fashion a plan on where these food trucks will be allowed on our beaches.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with councilmember Newsma and councilmember Kelly, that we do need to have more public participation in this discussion. The, I was on the council and did participate in the lakefront master plan. It took a year. We had 10 well-attended community meetings all over Evanston, with several hundred people who participated. And, and we have followed that lakefront master plan. It hasn't sat on a shelf. The lakefront that we have now, with all of its improvements, and the, the amenities that we have now, is in keeping with that lakefront master plan. If we want to make changes on the lakefront, I would support engaging in another lakefront master plan. But I don't want to do this piecemeal. I've received many, many emails and calls today about the food truck issue, enough to make, to convince me that, and I also have enjoyed food trucks in other cities, and we've actually had a food truck festival here in Evanston regularly, in the 8th Ward. I would, but this is something that we really need to take time to get input, get community participation in. If we're going to be transparent, and we're going to believe in having stakeholders participate in these significant decisions, because certainly our parks and our lakefront are something that Evanstonians care very deeply about, then we have to follow our, our process, and the process that we followed before and that people expect. So I am going to move to hold this tonight, and I hope that I receive a second, because we really need to have much, much more discussion about this.
Councilmember Nguyen moves to hold item H1. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Revelle, second. So two members have sought to hold. Is there a motion to overrule the hold?
I move to overrule the hold. I mean, this is just for introduction. There's another meeting in several weeks that are, that's coming. This is the public process. This, this is discussion. Folks, we heard from folks. We'll have another opportunity in a few weeks to hear from folks again. So I move to overrule the hold.
So councilmember Reed moves to overrule the hold. Is there a second to that motion?
I can second that.
So councilmember Fleming seconds that. Before we vote, before you vote, just a little, little collective arithmetic, two-thirds of eight is five and a third. So it'll require still six votes to overrule the hold, even though there are only eight members present. With that, would the clerk call the roll on councilmember Reed's motion to overrule councilmember Nguyen's hold?
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Yes.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
No.
On that, there are three voting aye and five voting nay. So the motion to overrule fails, and the hold stands. And this item will then return at our next meeting. This brings us now to item R1. First of all, as I understand it, councilmember Nguyen would like to suspend the rules. Do you want to make that motion, councilmember?
Yes.
So councilmember, go ahead.
I, I move to suspend the rules with respect to ordinance 72021, amending Title II of the city code and codifying the Economic Development Committee.
Councilmember Nguyen moves to suspend the rules to allow for introduction and action on item R1. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Is there discussion on the suspension of rules?
Um, yeah. Is that allowed? I don't remember. I think, I think the answer is yes. I presume it's a debatable motion. Councilmember Reed?
May I ask councilmember Nguyen what the rush is to suspend the rules here?
Well, it's because, as you had pointed out earlier, councilmember Reed, this is codifying the changes that we made about who can serve on the Economic Development Committee. We're, we're expanding it, and as, to accommodate the extra city council members who wanted to join it. And that's what the language is that's, that's being changed here. And by moving it forward, then we don't have to wait for another city council meeting. And the Economic Development Committee, currently, as we just met the other night, the new members of the council weren't formally seated on it, because we had not expanded it. So this is to expand it, and to, to make sure the changes, that, to allow all of the members of the council who wanted to serve to actively serve. So, and as you pointed out earlier, and I was going to ask the mayor to point out, this does not have anything to do with the reparations committee. This is, the reparations committee simply is renumbered in the code, as you described. So this is, the, the changes here that are being made are expanding the Economic Development Committee's membership, and getting that in our code.
So the Economic Development Committee was not codified before. Is that understanding correct, Council Cummings?
That's correct. It was created by resolution. And, and the Rules Committee in May, a referral was made to actually codify it by ordinance. And so that's why this is brought before the council.
Did the Rules Committee approve that action? I don't remember the Rules Committee taking action to codify the Economic Development Committee.
The referral was to city council by the Rules Committee to codify the Economic Development Committee.
And the Rules Committee voted on that?
Yes. The Rules Committee that we had on.
It was May 20, it was your first, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the immediate, the Rules Committee meeting where you guys all picked committees, was when the referral was made to city council, specifically to codify this committee.
Okay. And, and it is, okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
So with seven voting aye and one voting nay, the rules are not suspended. And so we may only hear item R1 for introduction. Would someone like to make such motion?
I move introduction of item R1, ordinance 73021, amending the city code to change restrictions on, oh, I'm sorry, I read it wrong. Item 72021, amending Title II of the city code and codifying the Economic Development Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves item R1. Councilmember Revelle, seconds. Before hearing any discussion, I want to point out, I want to request an amendment. The, the draft before us that was just moved renumbers the reparations committee from chapter 17 to 16, and then also calls the Economic Development Committee, chapter 17. It turns out that all of that was an error. So we could have avoided all the confusion about reparations. So I would like to request that someone move to simply replace all the 16s with 17s in the reparations committee, and then to replace the 17s with 18s in the Economic Development Committee.
I move that we replace the number 17.
With 18 in Economic Development.
With respect to the Economic Development Committee, and we restore the number 16.
17.
17, we, to the reparations committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
So councilmember Nguyen moves to restore the number 17 to the reparations committee, and number the Economic Development Committee, 18. Councilmember Revelle, seconds. Is there, councilmember Reed?
Just clarification. My understanding was that we consolidated two committees into one, and so thereby eliminating one of the committees in the ordering there under Title II. And so I'm just, so can someone explain exactly what the error was?
So when we eliminated or consolidated those committees, there was an ordinance that set to renumber and strike and renumber a bunch of other committees. In reality, what we should have done, it was just strike that section of the code, much like the state of Illinois does when it amends or repeals codes. We should just have created new numbers. And so that's what we're, we're doing here, is creating the 18 and leaving 16 blank, because 16 was stricken. And so moving forward, 17, 18, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I should have caught it in 70021, when we renumbered those three other committees, but.
So, may I ask you a question? So Council Cummings, does that mean, does it state in our, then would it state in our code that such and such was repealed?
Yes.
Okay. So then, so there's actually a legislative record indicating why something is no longer there?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, the amendment is adopted. Is there any discussion now on the amended ordinance? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero, R1 passes. And remember, this was for introduction, so it will be back for action on our July 12 meeting. That brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Burns?
I have a, there's a 5th ward meeting, June 30, 7:00 PM, virtual. You can get information on the city's calendar, and that is all.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Two, or three things. Two-ish. One, I want to thank everyone who participated in our trans-affirming best practices workshop on the 22nd. Thought it was a great program. And thank you to all those who participated. And I'd just like to acknowledge that Larry and Mary Gavin are moving on from the roundtable, and thank them for their time covering Evanston, and well-deserved reshaping of their lives. And also acknowledge that Genevieve Bookwalter lives and also acknowledge that Genevieve Bookwalter has moved on from Pioneer Press and also thank her for her work in covering the city council and look forward to seeing what's next with her. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Revelle?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
I guess I will just add to my congratulations to Genevieve Bookwalter for moving on and getting some time to spend with her new child. You know, she was a great reporter here. I will have a ward meeting on July 10th, so I'll work with the city manager's office to get that out in a newsletter. So Saturday, July 10th, with the time to be determined, will be the next 8th Ward Ward meeting. It will be virtual. And if, if that changes and we do do it in person, that'll go out in the newsletter as well, so.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, also want to thank the residents and thank Councilmember Sufferton for hosting the workshop with the 9th Ward residents, as well as thanking City Clerk Mendoza, Evanston Latinos, for hosting with me the Evanston Latin music that we had at Ridgeville yesterday and thank you for Ridgeville for hosting. I also do want to make, I guess it's not a real referral, but encouragement to the city manager's office that we might think about doing some type of training when our staff is back or even before, and even that the council would do some type of training around kind of trans-affirming practices, LGBTQ practices, inclusionary measures and so on and so forth. So hopefully we can get that on the agenda for, both for the council and for our staff.
Councilmember Kelly?
We're having a first ward, a special first ward meeting this Wednesday at 7 o'clock to focus on the American Rescue Plan funds that the city of Evanston has received, so I certainly hope many first ward residents will show up so I can hear your ideas and brainstorm together, also with Mayor Bis. Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, I also want to thank all the residents who come out to speak for public comment. I always forget that and I just, it's so valuable. Thank you to all the residents who come out and give up their time to share their thoughts with us.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like first to wish everyone a happy 4th and then to tell everyone in the 3rd Ward or anyone else in the city that I am returning to in-person office hours Thursday, July 8th from 7:30 to 10:00 AM at Brothers K at the corner of Main and Hinman. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
I would also like to thank the Gavins and congratulate them on their retirement and thank them for their, their service over these last many years, especially in an era in which corporate-owned newspapers have really become a shadow of their former selves. Like, the importance of local journalism cannot be, cannot be overstated. It's a vital community service and I wish them luck in their retirement, but I have very high expectations for the ongoing success of the round table. Ward meeting coming up Tuesday, July 6th. That one will be at Robert Crown. In person, that will be in person. Office hours coming up Saturday, July 10th. We had a coffee shop in the 4th Ward, to be determined.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, sorry, I was not prepared, so you got a really reduced version of my ward announcements, 5th Ward residents, so I apologize. So I have my stuff up. 5th Ward meeting, June 30th. We're going to be discussing the 5 5th TIF, so establishing a new TIF district, so anybody who is interested, please, from anywhere in the city, interested in having a TIF conversation with us, please attend. We're also going to be discussing a market analysis and business district revitalization plan for the 5th Ward. We're going to be discussing the boarded-up properties on Emerson and Jackson Avenue. We'll have a status update regarding that property and then generally property, property standards, complaints. And then also wanted to publicly respond to Mr. Sutton's comment regarding the waste transfer funds and, you know, that money was, was meant to, to, to improve and resurface and add proper drainage in alleys that are at this point just gravel, including the alley behind his, his, his home. I, I do have an update on that. So staff has been unsuccessful in obtaining an easement from Cod, ComEd to improve that alley, they call it Alley Number 4, between Emerson and Lyons East of Darrow. It is anticipated that the necessary easement will be obtained later this year as part of the ComEd franchise negotiation. So Mr. Sutton and anyone else whose property abus that alley, just know it is next up. Thank you.
Can, I just, I wanted to recognize the young folks at Evanston Fight for Black Lives who raised over $2,000 to provide beach tokens for Evanstonians to access the beach on the off days. And so thank you to them and thank you to their Parks and Recs Department, Karen Hawk and even Director Hemingway for working with us to, to make sure that they can get those tokens distributed, so.
And finally, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Burns to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILS, ILCS 122A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel. This agenda item is permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is, and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 122C and are set forth as follows. Exceptions, a public body may hold closed meetings to consider the following subjects: personnel, litigation, settlement.
Councilmember Burns moves that we resolve into executive session to discuss personnel settlements and what other item?
Litigation.
And litigation. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With the vote of eight to zero, we will now break for executive session.